It is five thirty. I will call the regularly scheduled January meeting of the Woodward School Board to order. Call, please.
Ben Martenson.
Here.
Terry Hildbrandt, I am here. Leo Thomasgard.
Here.
Kathy McGrath.
Here.
And John is again delivering the mail. I'll consider a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda in the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. For the first time in a while, we have student representatives tonight.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Jesse Vandahe. I am the Student Council Advisor this year. Taking over and this year in Student Council, we've organized a couple things. We've done a blood drive here, hosted at the high school in fall. We were able to plan a lot more of our traditional homecoming activities this year, so that was good for our members. Hosted cookouts at the start of the year, welcoming all of our returning students as we kicked off the school year. And then volunteering with like our head as they've been running more of their traditional events this year. So that's been great. It's been a good time so far. And I've got two members of our Student Council here, two sophomores, to talk about what's been going on in the school as their representatives.
Hello, I'm Dakota Bars and I'm a sophomore. I'm a two-sport athlete. I'm in forensics, Spanish, and drama club, team leadership, and I'm class president.
And I'm Aubrey Schroeder and I'm also a sophomore and I'm a three-sport athlete. I'm in team leadership, decathlon, club, drama, and forensics.
So we are here today to give you an overview of what's been happening the past few months at our high school.
Um, starting off with how basketball season has been going for both teams. The boys varsity basketball is on a seven-game main streak and Nathan Gibson is leading the conference in points per game. The boys will have an away game at Pittsville on Friday. Our girls basketball team has two wins now and a conference game at home tomorrow versus Pittsville. Even though our numbers are low with only eight girls on the team, we're working very hard and looking forward to finishing the season strong. Last Friday, we scored our leading scorer, Taylor Martin, and she signed with the Beaufort University. With basketball, we have competed in first the first week in early November. We are currently sitting in third place out of sixteen schools. There are three total meets and the second one is going to be in early February.
The yearbook has been progressing with Mr. Jensen's class in the first trimester, putting a lot of work into the project. The third trimester class will finish the yearbook. In the meantime, since some students from the first semester have been continuing to help on the project. With drama club, we faced some complications and are figuring out how to move forward. We lost a few actors, so we aren't able to continue the play that was originally planned. So we plan to meet and figure out something else to do in the spring. With National Honor Society, applications are going to open this week. Induction will take place on Wednesday, February sixteenth at six P M. in the cafeteria.
Thank you for having us and listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to have you back.
Wonderful to hear the difference. In spite of everything, there's as much normalcy as you can possibly obtain. Thank you so much. And thank you for your your work in advising that group.
They're running to basketball practice, so they're not being rude, but.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Four board members are in attendance tonight. Mr. Davenport will be here when he when he can, given his work restrictions. The next item on the agenda is the reading of a DPI proclamation recognition of adult school crossing guard recognition week. State of Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, a proclamation. Whereas Wisconsin's adult school crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure the safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians. Children walking between home and school and whereas adult school crossing guards typically serve with the dedication that discounts the rigors of harsh weather, split shifts, heavy traffic. And these rigors are currently compounded by the challenges presented by COVID- nineteen. And whereas for more than five decades, adult school crossing guards have served communities to make them more secure. And whereas adult school crossing guards add to the effectiveness of the student safety patrol members whom they often serve and whose activity they help direct. And whereas adult school crossing guards help reinforce in the minds of young people. They assist the importance of traffic hazard identification and safe street crossing behavior. Therefore, being resolved that I, Jill Underlee, State Superintendent of Public Instruction, declared the week of January tenth through fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two Adult School Crossing Guard Recognition Week, a time to recognize and thank the many adult school crossing guards whose commitment makes a difference in the lives of children in Wisconsin's public schools.
Yesterday, we surprised our adult crossing guards with some hot chocolate and muffins. And this morning, Chief Drew and I delivered a couple of gift certificates as well, so.
Most of you are aware that we initiated a school safety patrol program this past fall. And and the crossing guards work in conjunction with that. And as a safety patrol cadet of.
Many moons ago.
We'll say the last century and be kind. These these duties are are somewhat mundane and many times sort of poke fun of, but they are extraordinarily important. And and as is true with so many things, all it takes is one child who is distracted, meandering out into the street and becoming a statistic. We can't possibly over emphasize the importance of children intermingling with cars around around schools and the crossing guards and the safety patrol cadets help immensely with that. So a great deal of thanks to to all of them. Our next board meeting, tentatively set for Wednesday, February ninth. Is that good for everybody? Okay. Item four, administrative reports. Report on school safety and security audit and COVID- nineteen update from Superintendent Kona.
Good evening. I have the two topics that I plan on covering with you tonight, except I'm gonna start with the second one first.
Okay.
So I'm gonna talk about COVID first and then get into the safety and security audit. We are certainly experiencing the current COVID wave at school. That's the same as you're seeing around the state and the country. We are continuing to update on a daily basis to the best that we can our COVID- nineteen dashboard on our website. Today, when that was updated, the middle school, high school had five positive COVID cases and twenty-six quarantines. The elementary school had two positives and nineteen or nine quarantines, I'm sorry. When we are able, we are testing students if that's deemed necessary. However, due to multiple reasons, our testing program has been limited over the past few days. We have paused our test to stay program due to having none of the rapid tests needed for that program. And consequently, on Monday, we were also notified that the Wisconsin Department of Health Services has restricted our use of rapid tests if we have them, which we don't. However, just to explain to you how quickly things change, one of the issues with the rapid tests was that they had expired. There was an extension given on those test dates. And now there has been another reextension given, so we'll actually have to go back in our lot of tests and see if any of those are in the this new extension. That has been very frustrating for our health staff and our school staff and probably parents and students as well. At the moment, with the way the quarantine and isolation guidelines are working, not having rapid testing capability is a hindrance if we're gonna do the testing. You know, if we have to use the PCR test, right now, we're looking at a three to four day return. By the time we've given the test, we are running into cases where the student in reality could be back, you know, and it's. So really, this lack of the rapid test, and I don't see that clearing up anytime soon. We're told that we may start seeing some more rapid tests next week and the federal government today issued a statement that they'd be releasing ten million tests a month. I'll just give you an idea of what that will do. There are eight hundred thousand students in Wisconsin alone. So ten million tests is an absolute drop in a bucket. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with that rapid testing capability over the next couple of weeks. The middle school, high school did institute mandatory masking starting today. Furthermore, we've communicated with staff multiple times over the past couple of weeks about mitigation strategies and just, you know, making sure that they're being cognizant of that and moving back to some of those limiting and mitigating factors that are mitigating practices that we were using in the past. Our maintenance staff has increased its cleaning time of high frequency touchpoints. They've also increased their utilization of the spray system that they have. We've certainly talked to our staff and issued some notice to our staff as well to be prepared if there would be a situation that we would have to move to a virtual model. That, you know, is really a staffing issue. If if we are lacking staffing, that's what drives us into that model. Okay, I mean, that's that's and it could be in multiple areas, but that would be what would drive us to that model. It would be a staffing, like, we just don't have the staff to open the doors. The quarantine and isolation is being at five days moves much quicker than it did previously. And although it's only been with us a couple of weeks, it's very evident over the past few days that that just, it cycles very quickly now, so. You know, I will, we've moved to this new quarantine and isolation model in conjunction with the Health Department, the DHS, the DPI. I know it's extremely frustrating when this guidance changes and changes multiple times and sometimes within just a day or two and sometimes during the day. In discussions with Wood County Health on this guidance, you know, Wood County Health is gonna follow that guidance to the best of their ability. They did issue some notice this week that they're not contact, well, they're not calling. There's an automated, like, contact tracing system that they're using. They're only making phone calls now, I believe, for people over sixty and under eighteen. And I have a feeling the under eighteen is probably even limited. Couple of interesting items that came from our meeting with Wood County Health recently. One is that this new wave has hit faster than was originally expected by the health departments. And the peak is now being predicted to be here, really, within the next couple of weeks. We may be experiencing it already. Second, in discussions with Wood County Health, I'm gonna say this, and I, this isn't a prediction, this is just what we're being told. Health officials are having some very serious discussions at state level about moving from pandemic to endemic and how this is treated. When that happens, when the health departments treat this as an endemic, it will greatly change, probably at least the contact tracing pieces of what we're doing. So it is certainly, it's a moving target right now. And really, this goes to, sometimes I know our our staff feels like they're like that dog chasing its tail, right? You just, you don't, you're going in a circle. I know it's frustrating for parents. I know it is frustrating for students, for staff on all levels, and I know our people are doing the best that they can. And you know, I know our health staff sometimes gets the brunt of some not very nice phone calls. And certainly, I commend their patience as well, because they do try to be as patient as they can, so. The second part of my report, I'd like to just provide you with a short update on our school district safety or crisis plan and that safety and security audit. The plan with with grant money that was issued by the State of Wisconsin in the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe, schools needed to develop safety and security plans and conduct audits. And at that time, we did that. If our plan is due for a new audit, and so this past month, Chief Drew and I conducted a review of the previous audit and then basically used that previous audit as the basis for conducting a new audit. And so we did walk school properties, walked in the classrooms, looked at various places, bathrooms, custodial closets, all over the place in terms of of doing an audit on the safety and security pieces. We have that piece completed, and now what we will do with that is go through and review the safety and security or crisis plan from front to back as it pertains to that audit to see if there are items that need to be addressed, changed. And as well with the audit, that's it's essentially a facilities audit. Are there items that need to be accomplished that haven't been yet? Are there new items that we've seen? And I'll give you a couple of, for examples, one of the items that, you know, in the twenty eighteen audit, we don't, and it it just is a matter of the way it is. It was noted in our audit in twenty eighteen, for instance, that we don't have a parking control system for our students. Well, our students park on a public street. We aren't able to enforce a parking control system like a lot of school districts. So that's not really an item we can effectively address from that matter. You know, that that, you know, when there's street parking, that that is not something that that we're able to control in that matter. So that would be just an example of something, you know, an item that would be in an audit. You know, fencing would be other items. It could be lighting in the buildings, lighting on the outsides of buildings. And, you know, a lot of those things in at that time in twenty eighteen, we took some steps to address, to give you that. For instance, one of the items we addressed was outside lighting. We greatly enhanced the outside lighting in twenty eighteen in that timeframe as it was something that was, you know, in conjunction with our safety and security plan. So over the next few weeks, we'll take that audit that we just completed and we will look at that crisis plan from front to back and bring that to you. And for a review as you need to do every few years, so. And that is the bulk of my report this evening.
Any questions for Mr. Kona? Next item on the agenda is report on special education open enrollment for the twenty-two twenty-three school year Principal Christie.
So in January, I usually come to you with our open enrollment spaces that we have available. There was an attachment, I'm sure that was in your board notes, showing those things. A couple changes that were made at the bottom of that sheet. One being that at the the first column there, where the elementary school obviously changed to first through fifth grade. So that moves the numbers and shifts them a little bit, so we had to take that into account, which can change the numbers due to another class, the elementary school, obviously. Speech and language, you'll also notice we give ourselves a cushion there of a projected enrollment by about two. Speech and language, you'll notice the projected enrollment was four because we were just in the process of qualifying two more students while we were writing this, so that's why. Regardless, that is a huge caseload for a speech path that isn't even a hundred, you know, full-time, one F T E. So that is a very large caseload, so that is why there are zero spaces available there.
How much is she here?
In this, well, in the she in this district, eighty-six, I think.
I thought it was, is it only Friday afternoons now?
Our speech path? Megan, she's here eighty-six percent of the time?
I thought it was more than that now.
Eighty-nine? Oh, maybe it is. Yeah, but it's not full. I mean, that's a big case load regardless of, you know, whether she was. That should be full time and a half. That's a lot of, that's a lot of kids, so.
But she does four K also.
Correct, and she does four K, yes. So then, under the early childhood, that is usually where we leave ourselves the most wiggle room. Partially because we don't know what our numbers are going to be a lot of times depending on our enrollment. Our enrollment starts in February and they need these numbers in January, so it's a lot of times we're unsure if you need some rolling. Sometimes we have to make kind of a guess limit on that, and sometimes kids don't come into us knowing what needs they have until they get into four K or five K, and that's when those things become more more prevalent. So that's why we leave those, we put more of the spaces there. So that's why we put the three spaces available for the EC, which is pre-K, four K, five K. Kind of, we we put our kindergarten in with that kind of early childhood area. Then grades one through four, I mean, sorry, one through five. We have our number that kind of shifted down a little bit because of, like I said, the fifth graders being here. And that just bumped up by two. And then six through eight, our numbers, you'll see the bulk of our numbers there are kind of in that elementary, middle school area and that our high school's a little a little smaller. Now, that number shifts and moves just kind of depending on the the class, the kids. Our numbers went down a little bit in the high school. We had several long-time special education students that either moved out of the district. We had some kids graduate. That's just kind of the why those numbers are a little lower at that level. However, if you add up those numbers, ideally, we usually have our special education, special education teachers' caseloads, say that three times fast, about ideally twelve to fifteen tops kids per caseload. If we would top out with all of these projected enrollments, it would be fifteen point five kids per caseload, so. And that would be leaving us that one space available at the one-five and not even including that one space available and the three spaces available at the the four K, five K. So that's kind of how we came up with those numbers is just looking at what are, what we have available, what currently we're servicing, and it's a tough, it's a tough thing to do to predict, because you never know who's going to move in or out of your district, but we do our best to kind of see where we're at now. Project giving ourselves a little little window room for kids that may move in or out and then try to leave a couple spaces open should a younger sibling from an already open enrolled kid oh, come in. That's a younger sibling and then qualify for special education, so.
Okay. Any questions for Principal Christie?
On the regular education enrollment with the number coming into kindergarten, that's seems low.
That's really, at the moment, that's a rollover number.
From who's in four K?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Because we have a lot of our district students that are not in our four K, or maybe not a lot, but some.
So.
Yeah.
And it goes back and forth.
Right.
That would tend to be one of the places where you're gonna get a bump.
Yeah.
When a kid starts school, kindergarten, if they're open enrolled, they show up. They may not have been here for four K, but they suddenly are like, hi, who are you?
Sometimes the day before school.
Right.
Or the day up.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, then we'll we'll continue.
Thanks, Kara.
Thank you. We'll come back to Esther on that in a bit. Next item on the agenda, report on class registration process for the twenty-two twenty-three school year Principal Schroeder.
So next Wednesday, we're gonna kick off getting ready for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, which sounds unrealistic already. I was just thinking about on my way here, this is the first year that we might have, or we're planning on trimesters in the same schedule kind of in the in the years that I've done this, so this is, this is something to be excited about. We, you approved this last last board meeting, I believe. So on next Wednesday, all the the kids and the teachers will be together socially distanced. Again, we're planning for all of the COVID precautions. And the teachers come and share what they're teaching, their their core academics and the electives. Kind of give them a sense of what they should be interested in, what their, you know, their, what their path should be, okay? Kids can ask questions. We give the kids this, and we also give the kids a kind of like a form for freshmen at each grade level, what they do need to take and where they have spaces for electives. So we're asking them to go home. In the past, we had given parents this and it had to be signed. We're putting it more on the students, take this home, discuss with their parents what kind of path they want to take, what their options are. Go on, the computer will be open and impeding campus for an entire week and they'll fill in their trimesters in there. Then they need to address the teachers if they're in advanced classes or taking a dual credit class, like, for example, at mid-state. And then the teachers and them will have some discussion whether that's wise for them, if that's where they're at, or they should be taking a different route, like I talked about. Then the counseling department and teachers get together, develop the master schedule, see where our numbers are, see where our staffing is. And that's when Cal comes back and gets approval of what we need and how we can best meet our kids' needs. So that's where we're at. It's a little bit different this time. You know, just tweaked a little bit. We'll be doing the trimesters again. We've had success with them. Looking, you know, we're making some changes. You live and learn for next year and there'll be five periods again. The kids have done well. They've liked that they can focus on five classes, maybe an elective or two, so it's not five hard classes or, you know, pounding the homework and still being, you know, after school activities and everything, so we found some success in this, so we'll take your two and and learn from there.
Have you gotten much or any feedback from any of the students or parents as to how they feel about the trimesters? They think it's good, bad, if.
Discussion, like, we didn't put out a.
No, I mean, just comments, just general.
Discussion, yes. Students a lot, and I think, you know, teachers have had a lot of discussions.
I guess I should.
They said it was less stressful because nine periods a day, they just felt like they were running. When we had those, when remember when we had to go every other day because of COVID? Some kids had a hard time organizing that because then they wouldn't see a teacher for every other day. And then they said they'd put some work off, or if they had to see a teacher and couldn't couldn't have that contact with them that day. So they, we we struggled through a lot of that. Right now, I think we're in the best place we've been. They're shaking their head, so that's a good thing.
Simply curiosity and, you know, just curious to see how anybody's reacted to it positively, negatively, and positive.
And some of the kids, I think some of the teachers have spent time with them, and I know I have, some of the kids felt that because they only seen them for five hour or five periods and only a couple tries. Teachers and kids thought, well, we're not seeing the teacher as much or having that class. And once we figure out the minutes and show them, they understood, no, it's just a different schedule, you're seeing them even more. Because we're making more use of our academic time with teachers, so.
Traveling back and forth as much.
Those little things you don't think of.
Right.
So, yeah, we are in a good place and, you know, with classes and offerings and teachers and, yeah, we, yeah. So, any other questions?
If the kids and the parents have started adjusting to this, I I am assuming that the the teachers, especially those people who had to convert a semester class to a try, had to make some curricular adjustments, had to to change things, spread things out, put things in a in a in a second part of a course. Has that all settled out as well?
Well, we haven't finished the year yet.
Okay.
So, um, so, and we had, I don't know if you remember, if you looked at our in-service notes. We brought in some people from Lincoln that had went through this and they were and I didn't know how they were gonna present. It was on in-service. And the teachers also, she did a phenomenal job. She was really honest. She said, I'm like you. I jumped in and I was afraid and thinking, how am I gonna do this? After they went through a year, they figured it out. She gave us some mapping tools and curriculum thing pieces, and she's been checking in. Like, she just, right there in Christmas, she said, do you need anything for your teachers? So I asked the teachers, how are you doing? Do you need anything? That's been phenomenal. So some of them are still struggling, because we try to fit everything in. We try to be, they try to be perfect. And, you know, they look at what they've done in the years past and they've had to weed out things or put in things. And they're not where they're supposed to be and they they get, you know, excited. But we haven't had like the first trimester and we're in the middle of the second, so the people who had first trimester and third haven't had that yet. So I know they're a little bit antsy or nervous, but they're doing fine. We're hard on ourselves. We really are. And and the kids are doing fine. You know, we don't see a decline in grades or or anything yet, so. Yeah.
So our workplace is better.
So your app list is better.
Yes.
The what?
The app list is much, it's shorter.
So we, every week we look at, you know, grades and concerns, especially Ds and Fs, like what's going on or, you know, some, anything. A lot of pieces and it's shorter. So that's, that's just, yeah, but that's good.
Any other questions for, for, thank you. Next item on the agenda, questions and comments and people in attendance. I don't see anybody checking the yes box, if anybody wants to address the board. Okay, thank you. Moving to the consent agenda, consider approval of minutes of the past meetings, December 8th and December 16th.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval of the minutes. Any discussion concerning that? If not, all those in favor say aye. Posed, motion is carried. Consider approval of financial reports. Do we have anything of a nature that we need to talk about?
Yes, and as Tyler had mentioned last month, he briefly reported that the Alexander Charlel Foundation once again has donated $12,000 for improvements to the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium. And then elementary school again received a bag of homemade knit hats from Mrs. Valerie Kerr.
Any other comments or discussions regarding the financials for this month? Not hearing any, do we have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
So move, second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion is carried. Unfinished business, moving into new business, consider approval of open enrollment spaces for special education and regular education programs for the 2223 school year. This was what Principal Christie was discussing earlier in the meeting.
Always a difficult task each year to, you know, put these numbers together and try to do some predicting.
Coin flip.
You get one opportunity each year to set these numbers and once they're set, that's it. That's what the law allows. Is Principal Christie explaining the special education numbers? There's a lot of thought that goes into that as to why those numbers are set and how they are. In regular education, this is more formula, more formula driven. So if you looked at that, just use the first grade, for example, 30 students represents two sections of first grade. Those two sections, under the class size policy that we have in place, those two sections could be as large as 48 total students. So it'd be pretty big first grade sections, but that's where the class size policy is. We reserve off 70% of that remaining space for our own, like resident students. The other 30% of that space is then designated as open enrollment space. And that formula carries throughout this, so. And that's a formula we've used for several years on this. So with that, I recommend your approval of open enrollment spaces.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second for the setting of the open enrollment spots for regular and special education for the upcoming school year. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion is carried. Consider approval of elementary school safety patrol advisor Pam Sorbo.
Ms. Christie, Principal Christie and I recommend your approval of Ms. Sorbo as the safety patrol advisor. She's worked for the students for many years and in several capacities, so. And I think is, looking forward to helping them with this project, so.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of elementary safety patrol advisor Pam Sorbo.
Second.
Or can't.
A, 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 a multiple second for, for Pam. Motion has been made in second to approve a appointment of Pam Sorbo as the school safety patrol advisor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion is carried. Consider request for post employment benefits for Mary Kalinski.
Well, as you know, we had talked with, talked with you at one point about getting some postings already out there for some potential openings. And I, I say that because I was in a meeting today where at the state level, the DPI level, there was some discussion about figuring out what we can do to address severe shortage in teaching. And I don't want to say there was any magic answers, but I do know it is better that we get moving on this ASAP. As you can see, Ms. Kalinski, this month, this letter is in front of you for the end of the school year. And I will note that somebody seated in here was her cooperating teacher.
Absolutely. Amy Lunsickel. Yes, I can't believe she's ready to retire.
Mary has done really well with our, our, our youngest students over the years and, and my daughter, Marion. And certainly, certainly sad to see Mary not be in a classroom, but I certainly wish her the best in that retirement. So I do recommend your approval of Mary's upcoming retirement.
I so move with sadness.
One second.
A motion to approve post employment benefits for Mary. With a second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried. Item 11, consider approval of contract increase from .9 to full time FTE for Heather.
So this would be remainder of the school year. Heather Lizitz is our, is she, is dual roles in the district. She is both our health teacher and she is also our elementary school counselor. The part of the day that probably, the part of the day that we need more time is within our counseling program. And especially with the increased needs we're seeing with many of our students this past year. We'd like to finish out the year in this capacity.
I'm glad we're in a position to do that.
Yeah, and from a, from a compensation standpoint, really based on roles that we're truly unable to fill at the moment. This is, it's not going to have any negative effect on our, on our, on our, on our budget for salaries or anything like that, so.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of contract increase from .90 FTE to 1.0 FTE for Heather.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Opportunity for individual comment. Kathy.
I just wanted to repeat and congratulations to Mary Kalinski. It, actually, it was Mary, Lisa and I that had many years together. And Mary's been a great teacher and I wish her well. And I'd also just like to thank all the teachers and especially the health aide and the school nurse. I know this is not easy. I just think of you guys every day and thank you for what you do because I know it's hard.
Carrie.
I'll second Kathy's praise of Mary for her service here. I believe it was just Kaden that was fortunate enough to, to be in her class. I think she started maybe just the year before we got in there.
The year that we went to all-day kindergarten, so she started.
So that's a long time ago. Also, very good to see the students back here. I was going to bring cake for the students. It's good that they had to go off to. Had to eat cake before practice. Make sure I bring cake for next meeting for the students. But also I heard that both of them are in forensics, which is awesome and, and other activities, which is great. Sorry to hear that the production is not going to go forward for this one, but we'll see something in this spring, so. Good to see these kids.
Ben?
Same thing. Congratulations to Mary, you know, wish her the best in retirement. Both my boys had her, I think, actually my youngest had her both because she kind of went to the Y for a year. And I think my youngest had her for 4K and for kindergarten, so.
But I got you.
Yeah. Like Carrie, it's good to see the kids back, good to see the kids having fun trying to do activities, math league, sports. Try to go watch a game and a lot of them are being streamed right now, boys and girls. Got some pretty good teams, playing some good ball, so it's exciting and looking forward to next year. But Doc Dona said scheduling for next year, so it's exciting and, you know, for anybody that's watching, I mean, help your kids all through this process. It's important so they get the classes they need. We've made opportunities for mid-state classes and other things, so take every opportunity you can to use those. That's all I have.
I, I would obviously parrot what everybody else has already said, but in another, another way to look at this, when you're in the people business, like schools are, you know, we're not, we're not making washing machines or blue jeans or TV sets. When you have generational learning going on and you have teachers and families who, who cycle through a teacher's classroom or a school's program with success year after year after year after year, that builds stability, it builds confidence. It, it, it builds a, a, a structure of learning that, that, that can't, that can't be, that can't be overstated. Kids, kids need consistency. They, they need to know who's in charge and, and who their classmates are and where they're going. And, and anybody who's, who's parented young kids or for that matter, older kids knows that, that their, their behavior and their, and your expectations of them are, are oftentimes off base when, when, when things go sideways. When things change, that, that's, that's difficult. Change is hard on all of us. Goodness knows the last couple of years have had more change than any of us could possibly have imagined, so. Congratulations to Mary. Thank you to, to, to her for all of her years of service. And thank you to all of the members of the school staff who continue to do their very, very best to try to do what's, what's right for our kids. It's, it's appreciated. I wish, I wish there was more ways to tell you that. Thank you. As mentioned earlier, our next board meeting is set for Wednesday, February 9th. The closed session at 5:00 if needed and a regular session at 5:30. Do we want to? March, it's, it's. The same date, so. Tentatively look at March, March 9th, same time, same station, month later. Anybody know of obstacles for those dates at this point?
Possibly would be gone during that Wednesday.
In March?
In March.
Okay.
I don't know that 100% right now. But. Bring that off in February.
Yeah.
Kind of assume I firm those things up one way or the other.
Great. Keep, keep Tyler advised. Next item. Consideration of motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to section 19.85 sub 1, sub C, sub F and sub G of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering employment promotion, compensation and evaluation data of any public employee E over which the school board has jurisdiction. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems which if discussed in public would like to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person involved in such problems and conferring with legal counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which the district may become involved in, including the following. And then the points listed, approval of minutes, consideration of staff compensation and discussion of a personnel matter.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second to go into closed session.
Take a roll call, please.
Let's have a roll call, Carrie.
Ben Martenson here. Carrie Hildebrandt here.
It should be a yes. Sorry. Because you're voting on whether to go into closed session.
Roll call, vote, not just roll call.
Yeah.
Ben Martenson.
Yes.
Carrie Hildebrandt, yes. Leo Thomas-Carver.
Yes.
And Kathy McGrath.
Yes.
We are in, we are in closed session as of 6:15 PM.